For next time.
Yeah.
Excited to meet the reading interventionalists.
You sit here.
With the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with a program review from Diane. Thank you for coming.
Oh, yes. All right, well, I'll just kind of share what I did this year as my role in literacy coordinator. So this was our first year really implementing the Read Act. And so as you'll see, a lot of my work really focused at the elementary because we were implementing Phase One of the Read Act, which was K through three. So we implemented the new screening protocols that were put out by MDE, which included like a gated approach, an extra dyslexia screener. Oh, I created a literacy website that had resources for both teachers and parents. And we've shared that out with parents several times. Monica and I are working on our local literacy plan, which is a lot more in-depth this year. The state is requiring a lot more information. And then I do, as a literacy lead, participate in monthly meetings to stay up to date. I also have been training about 50 teachers in letters. So we will be wrapping up the first half of that program. The first half of that program in May. We have one more late start this year. So I've been helping teachers with that as needed. And the teachers are all doing very well on their quizzes and things like that and in their participation. So I also receive coaching on that as part of the Read Act too. So, which is nice for me to learn how to work with adults rather than just kids. I have also put out opportunities for modeling and coaching for teachers. So this again has mostly happened at the elementary just because of their familiarity with me, I believe as well. But so I've modeled a lot in first and second grade and some kindergarten. And then I've been offering for the elementary and the intermediate, I've been calling them mini workshops, just as a way to try to get a little more coaching in a way that teachers might be comfortable. So I had surveyed them and then I planned workshops based on the results of that survey. So we've talked about straw groups or small groups, writing strong sentences, and decoding multi-syllabic words so far. Yeah, a lot of work with data. So I use the data from the fall to help first grade develop a, to strengthen their tier-one phonics instruction. It's kind of, it's called like a walk-to-read method. So their data was the lowest in their phonics. So we really kind of looked at it and split it up to really target what they need. So they were getting exactly what they needed in their tier-one and in their tier-two to help them accelerate faster. And it'll be interesting, it'll be great to see the growth in the spring. But so far from their progress monitoring, the growth has been very strong. Other things, like I provide teachers with ready-to-use resources. I have appointment slots that anyone can meet with me for any reason. To start providing the fidelity checks of the MTSS at the elementary, I did meetings with the teachers after the screening periods to help them, what are you going to do if you have a class-wide intervention? Help them set up their progress monitoring groups if they haven't. Sometimes it's just, when do I fit in, things like that. So to really help teachers. Oh, I also have gone into classrooms to do different things. Like I did dyslexia awareness in October. And I also did, in April, I offered to go into the elementary and the intermediate for National Schwa Day and taught the kids about the schwa. And then again, I was available to meet with parents at the elementary's reading night. And just I participated in a lot of different grade level meetings to work with the different teams. Again, that was mostly at the elementary, but I did make my way to the intermediate and the high school a few times as well.
Are you going to tell us what a schwa is?
Do you need to know what a schwa is? It's actually the most common vowel sound in the English language.
Funny.
It is when a vowel says "uh" or "it" instead of its typical sound. So like if you think of banana, the two "a's" that say "uh," that's a schwa. Maybe your kids were in the elementary and had me come in and they maybe told you about it.
About the schwa, my kindergarten.
There you go.
It's been a long time since Cory's kids were in.
And continuous learner here.
There you go. Yeah, and then work with assessments. The elementary school had last spring started a new assessment plan to make it more efficient. So again, we just, as we did it in the fall and winter, made it even more streamlined. So we don't lose as much instructional time to gather the screening data. And then I've also made myself available to help teachers with these diagnostic assessments that we do to really target instruction and just administer these one-on-one assessments that take a while. So just less instructional time is lost. Again, like I said, looking at a lot of data. So I compiled FAST data for each building after each screening period so that we can see which classrooms need to provide classroom interventions. And on that spreadsheet, I do link for the teachers what FAST Bridges' class-wide intervention is so that they have it right there. Same thing for the Sabres. And then we're really looking, I look to see if the kids who are showing up at risk on those assessments have an intervention in place, whether it is provided by the classroom teacher or an interventionist. Oh, like I said, I met with all those teachers. And then another thing I looked at this year was the growth report so that we could see which students are projected to meet end-of-year benchmarks. You know, sometimes classroom teachers just don't have the time to analyze all of these different reports. So I took the time to do that. And then, okay, I looked at whoever was projected not to meet end-of-year, made sure that they were being progress monitored. If they weren't, reached out to the teachers, helped them set it up and see, so that we can make sure that they were making growth. And if they weren't, we could make adjustments or start an intervention to help them get where they needed to be. So I worked really closely with the interventionists. I met regularly, especially with the DES and DIS interventionists, to look at their groups and adjust as needed. I didn't work as closely with the one at the high school because she really does a good job already of analyzing her data and knowing exactly what to do. Not that the others don't, but she is very, very data-driven. So again, helped refine the assessment plan. And one thing that's new that we're looking at for the elementary school for next year that I'm working on developing right now is an intervention boot camp. So we're pushing back our screening period next year. Just, it has to be done within the first six weeks, just so our little kindergarten and first graders aren't starting their very first full week of school, going to a big scary room and being assessed. It will help us see if they truly need extra intervention or if they were just really scared because it was the first week of school. So then our interventionists will spend September, those first couple of weeks, getting to know the kids a little bit in kindergarten, pushing in and just being an extra body in kindergarten. Or we're using the spring data here to see who might need a little push before the screening period in the fall. So if they didn't attend summer school for whatever reason or they didn't do as much over the summer, we can give them a little boost before we screen in the fall. So another component of my role was the MTSS. So I led the district MTSS meetings and I attended each building's SST meetings, where we, the student success team. I also worked with the team at DIS. They have quarterly MTSS meetings to look at data. And again, just make sure that the kids are in an intervention, an appropriate intervention, see what we need to change. I led our interventionists through a COMPASS program, the Effective Tier Two Programming through MDE, so that we really looked at what interventions we have in place and just making sure we're streamlined with our MTSS process. I developed the preschool MTSS handbook. And this is something that will have to be ongoing because the state is not putting out their guidelines for it until next year. So it will just be a work in progress. Another thing I did is I've sent out, I intended this to be monthly, but sometimes it gets away. But I sent out several newsletters that had like literacy tidbits for teachers to implement and some MTSS information, really focusing on the tier-one since it was going out to general education. And then I've been on the team to implement the Edgey Climber data warehouse. So that's what I've done this first year in this position. So any questions?
A lot. Diane, can you just share with them, I know kind of what your background is, but what your background was coming into this, so they understand like all the training you did.
Oh, sure. Yeah, well, I taught first grade for 15 years. And I'm just, my son calls me a word nerd. I just love to learn. I did letters training myself when it first came out by the state. I've been Orton-Gillingham trained. I have my master's in literacy curriculum and instruction. I just like to read a lot on my own about dyslexia and just research-based instruction, I guess. So I do a lot of my own reading, a lot of my own webinars and things like that to keep my learning. So it's just been a passion of mine, well, my entire teaching career, I guess. But, so yeah, I've done a lot of training. So, and I love teaching teachers about it too.
I can tell you that about this time of the year, maybe a little earlier last school year, when the Read Act came into play, version 1.0, I don't know if it's going to be a 2.0 and maybe a different. Conversations with my colleagues of districts this size similar were just freaking out about, how are we going to get all our teachers trained? How are we going to do all this? And they look, Matt, what do you got? And I go, I got Diane. She's already trained, she's already certified to train teachers in letters. We made the decision to go with letters as being one of our, that there were three options. We, the academic leadership team came to the conclusion that letters, even though it was the most extensive training, had the best results that we felt that our educators could get more tools in their tool belt. And we were just so fortunate to just turn to Diane and say, take it. Diane is, heaven forbid, she's going to go back in the classroom next year. We have Lindsay Westfall, it's going to be the literacy to take over the reins. But one nice thing is Diane's going to continue year two of the Read Act training with letters. So she'll continue to do that work. And I just really appreciate all the work I've gone in and just observed how she's interacting with those teachers. And it's difficult to come out and teach your colleagues. It's not the easiest thing to do, especially when you're used to teaching first graders. And then you gotta teach these adults on these, all this stuff with the Read Act and the letters training. And Diane had immediately, and we're talking about teachers from the high school, the intermediate and a good portion of the elementary school, the ones.
And preschool.
Yeah, and preschool. So a wide variety of a classroom, so to speak, and adult classroom. And just to watch the engagement there and the work that Diane's done, it's been great. So other districts have had to go to the cooperatives and outside trainers to help with this. We already had an in-house trainer, so it made great sense for us to tap Diane's expertise.
That's why I asked you, is just to point out the Orton-Gillingham training itself is insane.
Yeah.
And undertaking that is expensive and a lot of work. And a lot of districts don't have someone like you, and so it's super appreciated.
Yeah, but I just miss teaching too much. So that's why I asked to go back to the classroom.
And that was a deal that Diane and I made. She said, well, does, what does this mean? Does I, do I ever get? I go, listen, whenever you feel that you feel that that's your true passion and purpose, I'm never going to allow anybody not to go back into the classroom. So we knew that she was going to, made a great transition for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Very informative, lots of work here.
With that said, I would like to invite up Heidi O'Donnell, Teresa Campbell, to come forward to share some pretty exciting, good news.
You have good news. Take a nap, let's share it here since there's two of us. Hi, Heidi O'Donnell, Talent Development Specialist for the district here. Tracy Campbell, sixth grade, Language Arts Reading, Advanced Language Arts Reading, and History Day. We come bearing amazing news. We do a lot of things throughout the year. But one of our bigger things in curriculum for sixth and eighth grade advanced reading is History Day. And this year, over 19,000 students across Minnesota alone competed in National History Day under this year's themes of rights and responsibilities in history. Of those 19,000, 2,042 of those students moved on to the regional competition around the state, different sites around the state. And from there, 1,030 students participated at the state competition this Sunday at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Forty-five of those were Delano students, which was the most we've ever brought to a state competition for History Day ever. That consisted of 14 team projects and five individual projects. So competing in research paper, website, documentary, exhibit, and performance categories. Of those 19 projects, three of them won topical cash prizes ranging from $100 to $250, sponsored by organizations from around our state. And 11 of those 19 projects moved on to the final rounds of competition, with six of them of the individual or groups taking honorable mentions in their categories, which is amazing. Eighth graders Emmy Bydl, Cora Boyack, and Maddie Nysley took home fifth-place medals in the group website for their project on Furman v. Georgia, a black-on-white case. So they had to create their own website together, do all the research, everything. Like it's from the ground up, like there's nothing on that website. They have to literally do everything on it. So kind of how History Day works, the top two placements from each category qualify for the National History Day competition in Washington DC in June. Two years ago, we did have our first team go to Nationals from Delano. It's like breaking the spell. This year, Delano is taking three projects to the National History Day stage. So I mean, it's just, it's never been done before in our district. So three projects going on.
We're still on a high.
Yeah, like we're still coming off, like very little sleep. It was a 12-plus hour day yesterday, a lot. So eighth grader Alexa Hootery placed second in the individual website category for her project on "The Right to Revolt: Common Sense's Impact on Government", earning her place in the national competition. Oliver Berg, who got there two years ago, and Jacob Worth, their performance on the teletype reader, the invention that gave a voice to the deaf, also earned these two eighth graders a second-place finish and a spot at Nationals.
And for the first time in Delano history, we have a state championship team at the state competition. Also in the group, junior group performance, sixth graders Winston Berg, Zach Lao, and Josin Shweer took home the first place in that, for their performance in the Clean Water Act of 1972, the cleanest act with the dirtiest history. So just a little thing about that, there's different categories. And they're like group, junior group performance, junior individual performance. There's, they're broken up by junior and senior, broken up by group and individual. And the junior group performance category for the state of Minnesota is owned by Delano students. We took first and second place in that category. So we're the only ones representing that category. So to put this in perspective, Delano Public Schools was one of the top three schools in the entire state for sending the most students to Nationals this year. One of the top three schools in the entire state. While we may have had fewer students competing than other schools, our 45 students competed only six of the 18 categories. And still, we took three of the 12 national spots in the areas Delano students competed in. So three of the 12 that they competed in, we took them. To say this is an amazing accomplishment is just the tip of the iceberg. It's so much more than that. It's months of in-depth research. It's learning how to cite and annotate sources one would normally not seek out. It's taking feedback and constructive criticism and reworking a project. It's finding multiple perspectives and viewpoints. It's overcoming obstacles with technology, group members, and project fatigue. It's finding a passion they may not have uncovered and learning time management and organizational skills. It's educational excellence at its finest. And it's the little things, the early morning, well, and it's also the little things. It's the early morning work sessions with smoothies. It's the after-school work sessions with all the snacks. It's the laughing with teammates. It's the cheering them on even though they're competing against each other in the final round. And it's the celebration of hard work that each student puts forth. History Day isn't just a project to them and it's not just a project to us. It's an exposure to history and an awareness of their own understanding and their own viewpoints. One we hope our students will remember as they navigate their future. So we just wanted to come and just give you this information of this amazing accomplishment these students did and that represented Delano schools and represented all of us in this town. And asking that you would share with anybody that is willing to listen so that the word gets out there. It's just such a huge accomplishment. And it needs to be broadcast, this amazing feat that they did. And just asking that you would help us celebrate that as well. We're very proud of them.
Thanks for leading the charge. It's awesome.
Absolutely, yes.
I know if they're really passionate about it. But that's just amazing. I think that to come in first place was a historical thing. Just that you gotta remember, we're competing against districts that are huge in all sorts of different areas. And here we are, and if you remember, and I'll share this, I'll share this with you now, but I'll share with you, in my report, I'm going to be giving you your, the work that you did at your governance plan. And one of the things in our visions is to exceed expectations. Well, this is a prime example of students and teachers working together to exceed expectations. This is incredible. And we're, we're going to be happy to celebrate your transition to the next level in DC and really congratulate, I mean, talk about competing in your own house, which is probably a tough competition as it is before you even get to state. So pretty neat. Thank you very much for coming and sharing.
Thank you for letting us.
Thank you.
Amazing. All right, on the heels of that celebration of good news, we're going to move to the consent agenda, which has our minutes from the past meeting and a variety of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move, Ryan.
Ryan is the first.
I'll start it.
Second from Cory, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Right, motion carries. Next item is our resolution of the acceptance of gifts. The following organizations have generously donated their funds to a variety of specific activities here for the district, whereas charities, aid foundation, $22 for Delano Elementary School, DIS Pi, $500 for school author, and Loretto Lions Club, $3,000 for an AED for nursing. All of these have, organizations have generously donated the funds for the Delano Public School District. We are grateful for their support. On this, this is a, we'll need a resolution. So can I get a roll call?
We need a motion and a second first.
Oops, sorry.
I'll move.
All right, any discussion? Not, we'll move to a roll call vote. Sorry, Ryan.
Oh, good.
Board Member Jeppe? Aye. Board Member Black?
Aye.
Board Member Roser?
Aye.
Board Member Morella?
Aye.
Board Member Schost?
Aye.
And Board Member Baker?
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Thank you all. Next, we're moving on to Personnel Matters. One piece I wanted to point out here is Sandy Meyerson, within the retirement section, is retiring, I believe, is it 20?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, I had a dyslexic, sorry. Years within the district. And so send our congratulations to her for all the years of service that she's given to the district. Thirty-two years is quite a feat, especially in one district. So very appreciative for her. And so she is retiring here this, this June. Other than that, there are standard resignations and hirings related to this time of the year as the programs get ready for somewhat of the summer season. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel Matters?
Moved.
Black, first, second? Jessica, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our administrative reports. First up, Superintendent Sheen with the kids' report.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. This is my April 28, 2025 superintendent update. I'll be brief this evening. Just a few things I wanted to share with you. Obviously, we do now have a new district mission statement, vision, all of the work that you've done over the last three months. We also have strategic directions and we have value statements as well. Our district mission, which is really the district's core purpose, is to empowering every learner to achieve their highest potential through academic excellence and quality opportunities. So that's a mission that we feel is our core purpose. Our vision is what we intend to create and the vision of Delano Public Schools to promote and sustain excellence through comprehensive, whoops, comprehensive, relevant education programs, safe and supportive environments, exceptional staff, responsible resource management, and community partnerships. So there's the new district mission and vision, which will be all over the district to make sure that we follow. This will give great guidance for the management team and the staff to follow the district's school board's vision and setting that tone. In addition, though, we have core values of a tiger. These are our drivers of our words and our actions. These words are excellence, which is that commitment to exceeding expectations. I think History Day says it right there. Teamwork, collaboration, communication, and mutual support. Belonging, everyone feels welcomed, valued, safe, respected, and included. And then grit is resilience to face challenges with courage and determination. Those four drivers are going to make sure that our actions and our work that we do within the district are driven by those core values of a tiger. And then last but not least is our strategic directions. This is really the focus of our improvement efforts. This is what we're going to work on to make sure that we continue to improve student academic outcomes through relevant and responsive and inclusive educational programming, prioritizing our safety, positive behavior, and supportive relationships to ensure a culture of belonging, advancing professional growth to encourage collaboration, shared responsibility, and commitment. And we want to make sure that we ensure efficiency and consistency in our systems and standards within our district facilities, our resources, and our operations. And then last is enhancing and engaging community partnerships as well. So those are those main areas. This is our whole strategic direction that you did approve. This is our whole strategic direction that you did approve, the roadmap for us. I appreciate the board's work in this category. It took three months to get us to this point, but this, I believe, really sets the vision and is aligned with our operational plans that we'll be reviewing on a basis. And then these will be our guiding principles for the board to review their governance plan every quarter or so throughout the school year. And then just a real quick, the important legislative dates. We have three weeks left for the legislature to figure things out. I'm cautiously optimistic, but a couple of things. May 19th is a constitutional requirement for the legislature to adjourn. That's approximately in three weeks. They have not set, the Senate, the House, and the governor have not agreed on budget parameters in each of the areas of the spending of the next biennium. And the state fiscal year ends the 30th of June. So a couple of things could happen. They have said in the press that they're very optimistic that they will get there by the 19th of May. I think that they have quite a bit of work to do to get there. They just came back from recess, so they're, this is their first or second week back from the Easter Passover break that they had, week in mid, in mid-April. And so now it's just getting down to the nitty-gritty and it's got to be a lot of dialogue between. And there's some complications here, right? The House is at 67-67. So they're literally a shared-powered representative group. Nobody has a majority, so everything has to be agreed upon in shared power. The Senate is very close, but obviously still has a DFL majority. And then the governor, obviously. So it's, and as Cory said earlier, not this biennium, but the next biennium, which is the 27-29, we're facing some deficits that are pretty considerable. The good thing is, is that the legislature and the governor realizes that that's happening and they're taking actions now, even though we got about a half a billion dollars of a surplus, which is not really much at all to work with. They are taking steps in each of their plans to move forward. So nice thing, too, when you have this type of a discussion, heavy discussion at the financial level, there are still some proposed policy changes within education, but not as much as it was in FY '23 biennium where it was massive mandates and massive requirements and things like that. So it's a little bit of a balanced approach. I, I give it 50-50 that they will come to an agreement with the, with the budget by May 19th. Could happen, but those are important dates that we'll keep watching. And you guys get updates through MSBA. Mary and I get updates through each of our associations and organizations. In fact, we have the same lobbyists that gives us, Valerie does a great job for us. And it's really just a matter of, is what we talked about in the future is, is we're only going to depend on, right now, we haven't agreed at all to do any more on a funding formula than the inflationary piece. And right now, that's still, we don't know how they're going to get there when they're looking at a $5 to $6 billion shortfall, not in this biennium, but in the next biennium. So I hope they do take some, you know, some measures to curtail spending, whatever that may be, because I wouldn't, kind of like what we did for five fiscal years. We just chipped away at a fund balance and we just chipped away at our expenditures and we did some cost-saving reductions in each of those years, because I don't want us to run into a cliff. So if the, if the, you know, the state comes back, maybe not this biennium, but they come back in two years and they're like, well, we're going to give you a zero, zero, or even less than that, which is all on the table. You could get less than a funding formula per pupil. So that, that's a cliff that I hope that they realize. I think they do. I just want to make sure that we continue to push our legislators to be fiscally responsible, but also understand that education is a constitutional requirement that the state government has to fund uniformly. So we'll see how it goes. And that concludes my report for this evening. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Voight?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the high school. First recognition, I always start with recognizing the achievements of our students and staff. I talked a lot in the work session about CIS and PSEO and different college credit opportunities. One of the things that I've only recently become aware of through the Department of Education is the multilingual seals program. So this is an opportunity for students to demonstrate proficiency in a language other than English and get a multilingual seal. And depending on their performance and their score, they can earn either a platinum seal or a gold seal or get a world language certificate. Anna McQueen, our wonderful EL teacher, has been really pushing for her students to try it out and give it a go on one of a variety of tests that you can take. Our Pi group sponsored that test. They're like $60 apiece. And we had three students this year earn gold seals. So these are actually, we had this, one student achieved this two years ago. So these are just the second, third, and fourth students to ever receive this. They are Mikey Melko, Oscar Munoz Bello, or Beo, sorry, Fabian Maldonado. They've all earned gold skill, gold seals. So Mikey in Hungarian, and then Oscar and Fabian in Spanish. We also had another student who will get the gold seal when she goes to graduate, but she's only a junior now, so for Savia Gorlov achieved the same feat in Russian. And so a gold seal basically takes the place of three semester courses of that world language when they get to college. And Minskew schools are required to give that credit. So just awesome. They gotta hate that. I'm sorry. This is awesome news, is what I meant to say. Yeah, so I definitely want to highlight that. Another recognition, congrats to Oliver Berg and Megan Arneson. They, they participate in our speech program that we co-op with Orno, and they competed at state this past weekend. Oliver took fourth. Unfortunately, Megan didn't make it onto the finals round, but Oliver took fourth. Nevertheless, we had two students, of course, represent Delano at the state competition. And the other thing I'd like to just publicize is our musical, Hades Town, which opened this past weekend. There are shows coming up again Thursday and Friday, both at 7:00, and there's a Saturday matinee. Wonderful performance. We have a theater tech class for the first time this year, and they did all the set design and construction. And they actually have a rotunda onstage. So there's a spot on the stage that turns. I know Bobby put out a pretty nice video and put it on Facebook, and Jackson, I believe, helped with that video. But check it out, two hours of runtime, but there's a 15-minute intermission. Just amazingly talented students. So congratulations to them and hopefully we have a popular weekend of that show coming up this weekend. With that, in terms of a site-based leadership team update, obviously, we're working through staffing and our student handbook changes. Just an update on that staffing, we have hired a math teacher. We have social studies interviews this coming week. We're still looking for a long-term substitute in math and a .5 Fayed position. And we're also working to fill a halftime EL position. I mentioned Anna, she has resigned, as you just saw, in the personnel agenda to care for her family. So obviously, we, it's always kind of a fun time of year to interview people and bring in engaging new talent to the Delano schools, so that's always an exciting time. And then lastly, I do just like to extend the invitation to all of you to attend Senior Awards Night, which is May 7th at 7:30 PM. That will be in the tech, so come on down. We'll sit you right up front and recognize you for your leadership and role in Delano Public Schools if you so choose. That's 7:30 on May 7th. And then, of course, by the way, Senior Awards Night is our kickoff to what I call the celebration season. And then the culminating event, of course, is graduation on June 1st at 1:30. So with that, that concludes my report on behalf of the high school. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you. All right, Schultz.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, pleasure to be here on behalf of the elementary school. I will get us started with some of our site-based updates. Similar to Mr. Voight, we are working on our handbook revisions. We also have some field trip guidelines that we've been working through. Our fall field trips were successful, but a couple nuanced things kind of came up, so it's good to get the teams together to talk about, like, how could we make this smoother, various checklists, some templates that we think will be really nice for parents and families, which may work their way into the handbook as well. Schedules, we're always working on this time of year as well. And then our summer school and ESY, there's just a lot of logistical things that kind of go into that, that impact different teams and students and all those processes, so we're kind of going through that. And then we have some end-of-year watchdog events. So watchdogs is dads of great students. So we have a few regular dogs that we refer to them as that come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They've just kind of gotten into a great pattern with some of our kids and making some, nice connections. So they come in for morning supervision, have breakfast with the kids, and then they kind of take off. And then we have some that come in the afternoon to come and have lunch and recess with kids as well. So we have a running sign-up that they can do as it works for their schedule, and then they've made some great connections, as I mentioned. But then we also have a larger pool of about 20 or so that started with us at the beginning of the year. So we're trying to kind of do some closing pieces and bring them back to some of our events, our field day, and then our school picnic. So we're hoping to get them back on our campus in a little bit bigger format, not just our Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then I don't know if you've heard, but we had a change to our parent pickup process. And that was today. So from my perspective and logistically, it could not have gone better. We could have done without the, oh no, we might get stormed on and hailed on, but that was out of our control. It was a good test to see if everything was in place, and it went really, really well. I would like to specifically thank Ms. Dulkey. She helped a lot with the initial communications, sort of like, here's where we're at, here's the ideas, now make it sound a little bit better and more concise. That's a little bit more digestible, I think, for families. And she doesn't live it every day. So like, what goes through our mind of like, go to this place and this place? She's like, well, what do you mean by that? So that was really, really helpful. She put together some key messages for us as well, based off of some parent emails that we got. So it was really nice to have those snippets when we did get some questions. And then Mr. Shane came up, Deputy Larson, Megan Chatterton, and Barry helped make sure that the coaches and the kids that have spring sports did not come and park in our parking lot until 3:00, so we had all those parking spots available for our families. So at 2:45, I walked out and there was not any wait on Tiger Drive. It was crazy, in a good way. So I'm, I'm sure there'll be some things that we need to change and update as we move through, but I think initially, things, things went really, really well. So grateful to the parents as well. They had questions, some took to Facebook, but that's okay. Some emailed me, and then we spoke on the phone. So we were able to just sort of have a more open conversation about kind of why and help kind of respond to some of their concerns, but they were really great in trusting the process, seeing the need. Yes, they understood that and just were like, okay, well, put our best foot forward, and they really, they really did a nice job. So that was great. And then we also have, moving into staffing, we have one sped position open right now. We also have a long-term subposition in kindergarten that we're working to fill. And then there were a few moves in between grade levels, like there kind of usually is, like, obviously Diane is going back into the classroom, so then a couple people shifted, but all spots that they were hoping to be in. So that's always nice when people get their first request. For our MTSS and PD work, educlimbers big, as Mr. Voight shared in his kind of deep dive. That's been a lot of learning for everybody, but we know it's going to be great and we're excited for that initial meeting in the summer when we bring on a few more team members throughout the district so they can kind of see what we've been working on and the benefits that it will bring. As you saw Diane in her presentation, she's very savvy at looking at data, so we've gotten our preliminary MCA results in. And so she's kind of sifting through some of that and kind of looking at, okay, where are some growth spots and things like that for us? So I'll be able to share more of that next month. And then we're hoping next year to bring in some data literacy training throughout the district. That's hard to balance a little bit with the letters work, and then we're adopting a new math curriculum. Not next year, but the work behind what that curriculum will be and the new math standards is some of that work that we're going to be doing next year as well. So still trying to find those pockets of time with the next year of letters still going on that we can add in some more of that PD. An update for you on kindergarten numbers, right now we're at 150, so that's about 21, 22 per class, so sitting pretty well. I've given about one to two tours per week of incoming kindergarten families. So I would have, I would imagine that there would be at least another 10 to 15, but that's just based on past, kind of over the summertime, spring and summer. So we will see how, where we end up. Events that we are looking forward to, Tiger Dash is on Saturday, so if you are interested in running or walking a 5K, come on up to the elementary school. We've got music concerts and field trips, and then, as I mentioned, Field Day is coming up as well. And we have a mentorship appreciation that our kids hope mentors, that we partner with Light of Christ, they put on a really sweet breakfast for the teachers that have a mentor that they've been working with all year. So they come in, in, in May and do a nice little breakfast for those teachers. And then we had our art fair last Thursday, which was filled with really great creative art from our kids at the elementary school. So any questions or comments?
Just a little shout-out for the art fair. Jason and I had the opportunity to go up there and spend some time. I'm going to tell you something, there's some things there that they produce that I couldn't believe was produced by a kindergartner, first and second, third grader. It's incredible what they, what they can do, and it's amazing to see that, the color, the, I mean, it was all, you know, all sorts of different art that was there. It was really impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for allowing me to present to you this evening as a representative of the intermediate school. I'll start by sharing with you a little bit of what our site base has been working on. Our site base right now is really just in event planning mode. May gets really busy at the intermediate school, which I will share about next month. I'll give you a full rundown of everything we're working on, but that's kind of just keeping us busy to stay all on the same page with what we've got coming up. We've got a few staffing things happening at the intermediate school. We're hiring a fourth grade teacher. We're adding an eighth section in fourth grade, which is really exciting. It's going to force us to shift some things around space-wise, but we're excited to have another section. We're hiring a music teacher that we'll share with the high school. As you mentioned, Sandy Meyerson is retiring. She'll be greatly missed, so we'll be hiring that position. And then we're very excited to welcome back Seth Futter full-time intermediate school. That's going to help our scheduling process quite a bit, so we're really just very thankful and excited for that, looking forward to next year. So that's where we're at with our staffing. For professional development, we had our To Our Late Start this month. Our staff worked on completing the SABERS assessment for our students. They do that in the fall and then again in the spring, so they worked on doing that. We'll look at those assessments as part of our MTSS review. Some staff worked on letters, and then we also spent some time doing a parafeedback session, so we spent some time with our paras as well. In terms of MTSS, so kind of what we're doing with our interventions, like I said, we did finish our second SABERS screener, so that's looking at social, academic, emotional behaviors. So when we have our data team meeting, we'll look at those results and compare them fall to spring, just to see if there's any areas that we can do more work in supporting our students in. We have our final FAST screening window, so we do that in the fall, winter, and spring. We just wrapped up MCAs, so why not jump right into FAST testing? We'll start that next week. And then that is really what we look at more carefully. We look at our FAST results really carefully to start looking at the effectiveness of our interventions this year, the effectiveness of our core instruction this year, and any placements for next year. And then also at our SST meeting, where we kind of look at just our individual student needs, Mr. Schauburger will be joining us this week from high school. So he comes down and he kind of talks through our sixth grade student needs, any students just have on the radar as a transition to seventh grade. So Mr. Hinker collaborates with him in that process so they can make a smooth transition, which works out really well. So in terms of events that happened in April, I just wanted to highlight our MCAs. Like I said, we spend six days during the month of April doing MCAs. I think we're the only building that every single grade tests, and they all test multiple times. So we do seven MCA tests, six days, so if you do the math, that's over 1,500 MCA tests that we get done. We have science left, we're doing that tomorrow, and our testing window ends on Friday. It was really tight this year because we had Easter break and a late start, so God bless Mr. Hinker, but I'm like, don't go makeup yet, Greg. We're getting, just getting down to the wire, but we'll get them done. Our preliminary results are really very much on track and comparable to last year, which feels really good. The kids have been working really hard. And just to kind of give you a picture, just because I feel like people need to know, it's it's not just sitting 30 kids down in a room and saying, take a test. We have to train people. Starting in January, we train custodians, food service, office staff, because anyone with a master key needs test security training. That starts way, way in January. Our paras, our teachers are trained. We set up small groups for special ed students, 504 students, gen ed students. We need staff for that. We need space for that. We have to organize all of that. We have test tickets. We have to organize and get into the right locations. Our food service prepares breakfast for every kid every morning. They sign up, they come down, they get breakfast. And then, like I said, Mr. Hinker arranges all the makeups. And miraculously, our building is really quiet for a few hours on those mornings. So it really is a team effort. The whole building just really is like on point during these days. If you are in and you walk around, oh, we have parent volunteers come in and just sit and make sure our bathrooms are quiet. So it's really quite the undertaking that, like I said, we start working on in January. So when we finish tomorrow, we're going to feel really great. And I am very, like I said, I am very proud of our students. They've worked really hard. Whatever your opinion is of standardized testing, they do work very hard, and we're very proud of them. So other than that, we had an author come in, and he presented to us last Friday, James Kennedy. He was entertaining. If you were there, that's what we're going to say about him. Heidi brought him in. He actually works on the 60, 92nd Newbury project that the G T kids do. So that's kind of her connection to him. He came in, presented. He had a lot of energy. Our fifth grade math masters were last week. And then, like Heidi and Teresa shared, we had our state history day competition. We're really, really excited, especially for Winston, Jocelyn, and Zach. It was really fun this morning. They had a banner up in the sixth grade hallway. They were wearing their medals. And it's just fun to see, you know, they're being recognized by their peers and high fives and congratulations. And it was just a really fun celebration for them and all the other kids who were honorable mention. So a busy month ahead at the intermediate school. We're looking forward to it. We'll get it done. Any questions or comments?
It's celebrating kids for being smart.
It's great.
All right, Mary. A few things. The preliminary F Y 26 budget will be presented to the board during the work session next month. We talked about the prime vendors quotes that went out and were received on April 21st. That'll be also approved at the May meeting. And the option of exercising a renewal for both bread and milk this year or for next year, so we don't have to go out for quotes. And then I will look at pricing for meals, but we kind of want to wait until after the legislature's done, just in case they make a change to the free school meals. There was talk of possibly free milk for kids who bring cold lunch. So there's just a couple of things that until the legislative session is done, we're just kind of going to be up in the air. So we won't have any definitive answers or requests until probably June or July. But that's about it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next, Chris Frunkie, our community ed.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of Community Education. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about the enrichment, our enrichment and Tiger Kids Club programs. This past fall, Community Education went through some shifting of staff responsibilities, which resulted in Rachel Wallace transitioning into a coordinator role from a supervisory role. And she's now assumed the coordination of the enrichment and Tiger Kids Club School Age Care programs. And so for the enrichment side, from our winter and spring brochure, Rachel has coordinated 36 sections of enrichment activities, which has served 90 participants so far. Some of the more popular programs were the Tiger Paint Club and our Paint With Me sessions. And then also chess remains to be a popular offering, again, very popular, always has been. Trends that we have noticed, our participation interest levels are always higher at our elementary than our intermediate school. Some things that we're noticing that it's been a challenge to meet some of our registration minimum numbers, based on kids today have more and more activities that are available to them. So we are needing to think a little bit more creatively in how we try to get more kids interested or how we are generating more interest in our classes. Some of the ideas that Rachel has come up with, she's kind of utilizing now her role as, with TKC to help kind of bolster the enrichment side of it too, to get more interest in her classes. And what she's done, there's a, if you've been in the community ed building, as soon as you walk in right to your right, there's Bolton Board there that she's kind of taken over. And she's put flyers of all of her enrichment activities on there. She's put a QR code on there for a direct link to registration for those families. So as they're passing by, if kids are interested, mom or dad can just scan the QR code, be taken right to registration. And so just trying to generate a little bit more interest in that way. Also, again, continuing to send flyers through P H R. And then also going after our, not going after, but eliciting our TKC families again by sending emails directly to those families to help try to get that population interested in those classes as well. One other great idea that she's had too is we're also exploring resourceful ways to use scholarship dollars that we have available to us. So things that we've noticed is that when we have classes that get close to registration minimum, and we have to make decisions on those classes if they run or not. And so when they are getting close to those numbers, we're utilizing some of the scholarship dollars that we have available to connect with our counselors at our elementary school or intermediate school, depending on what the class level is, and trying to see if there's any students that have, would be interested in taking those classes, then offering them the class for free, but using our scholarship dollars to supplement the funding for that program and then try, so that we don't have to cancel a class that has close enough registrations, but also giving an opportunity to some kids that might not have an opportunity to participate in enrichment classes. So trying to get creative in how we make those classes run and really looking at the budgets to make sure everything is operating well. And again, by doing this, it also helps to keep families' interest in programs, because if we cancel classes often, families tend to shy away from those classes, not thinking that they're going to run. So we want to make sure that we are doing our best to make sure those classes do run. On our TKC side of it, or Rachel's position here, for a school age, for the current school year, we have 122 school age contracts. So we are full at the current moment for this current school year. We did, like I mentioned this before, but at the beginning of the year, we were in one of the worst staffing shortages that TKC had faced. So we partnered with Radar Talent Solutions. We were able to, we've been able to hire multiple full-time, full-time adult staff members. And then as the year's gone on, we've been able to continuously continue to hire full-time adult staff. That's allowed us to have the flexibility to cover staff absences or if we have to make some adjustments with staffing during the day, it's allowed us to be able to be flexible like that. Doing the, with that, we currently have a team of five school age adult staff members and 10 high school aides. And then one thing that we do want to mention is that our high school aides have done a phenomenal job. They have been presented with some challenges. They've also had the opportunity to take some leadership roles within the program and taking on, leading some classrooms when we've needed it. Or with adults that are still on the floor, but they've had the opportunity to take a classroom and lead it and get that experience well, and they've done a phenomenal job with that. So we want to recognize their efforts there. And then for our upcoming summer program, there's some changes that our program is going through. One of the most significant changes for the upcoming summer session is that the summer TKC program will be at the Community Education Building this year. It was not an easy decision to make that decision to come back from the school campus and come back to Community Ed Building. But we went through our I R O D process, got all the information, all of the reactions. We went through the process, and we found that it was going to be best for the program to come back to Community Ed. Some of those reasons, we're having a dedicated space for all of our materials, enhances facilitation of activities, staff comfort, and that also leads to a better staff morale. And then keeping the team together enables better coordination and administrative support throughout the program, along with enhanced behavioral support system. So we have some staff that handle behavioral supports. And there, before, we had them at the Community Ed Building, but now bringing everybody back, they're going to be able to help support more of our students throughout the entire program and not just one specified area of that. And it also simplifies the drop-off and pickup process for families and enhances safety through better access control and understanding of how to secure spaces during emergencies. So our staff are very familiar with how our building operates and works, and they've been going through the drills and training with our safety procedures. So having them in our building is going to help enhance that process as well. The number of families served will remain consistent with previous summers. We have a total of 238 contracts, 47 of them are preschool, 191 school age contracts. We currently do have 35 that are on the waitlist. Our theme this summer will be the Backyard Expedition. Each week, students are going to meet with a special animal visitor who will lead them through exciting activities that inspire creativity, curiosity, and teamwork. The activities will range from exploring nature through play. Our outdoor adventures will build skills in problem-solving, fitness, and environmental awareness. Transportation through the Elm Express, which is a, we have contracted with selfie to rent a van. Will provide transportation on campus to various enrichment and recreation activities. So TKC is going to provide transportation to 61 sections of activities from June through August, as well as transportation to summer school. So by joining TKC, those students are still going to have access to the programs that they had access to when they were on campus. They were just now providing them transportation. One last thing, and just that's been a benefit for our programs, the collaboration between the elementary school and community ed. And so Rachel, our coordinator, is a member of the E S site base team. So her participation on the site base team allows or enables us to maintain very good connections with the administration, the teachers, and social workers, and maintains an open line of communication being crucial as it helps our staff better serve and support the children in preschool and TKC. And one of our primary goals with this is that we are maintaining consistency in language and the expectations from our programs to D E S. So when our students go from community ed to the elementary, we want to make sure we're using the same consistent language and having the same expectations. The same thing when they come back to us for TKC or for the school age care is that we have the same expectations that they've been going through at the entire day and using some of that same language. So having her being a part of that has been a huge asset for our program as well. That concludes my report. If anybody has any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
The capacity wasn't, I thought the capacity was an issue for moving into the different school, but that doesn't seem...
We're going to be able to facilitate the same number of families that we have when we were there versus then bringing them back into the community ed building. So we're going to have the same capacity from then to now.
Okay.
The upcoming summer.
Can I just say one thing? One of the reasons that we did go to the other buildings for those years also was to do some deep cleaning at the community ed building. Got it. Because when it's used 12 months a year, they just wouldn't get that done.
Okay, so that's no longer a concern?
They've done a really good job.
It's not a concern, but we have been, we have been working with our custodial staff to figure out a rotation to get kids out of rooms so they can go in, waxing, scrubbing, the deep clean, and we'll rotate them in and out. So we've come up with a process for that that should work for this coming summer. So yeah.
Makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions for Chris? Okay, moving on to board reports. Masico, Sarah.
We had our monthly Masico meeting. Just a few high-level things. As always, in social education, staffing is always an issue. So the management of moving staff to meet student needs, managing resignations and retirements, and making sure we're always fully staffed in Masico is always a priority. That is, that's a monthly ongoing issue that's, I think, very efficiently addressed. We continue to get some updates from Masico's executive director around the Department of Education at the federal level. It's a changing landscape there. So just, she's great at staying on top of those things and how that may impact an entity like Masico, which is heavily dependent on federal dollars. So we appreciate those updates from her around that. Other... Defense calling out some transitions from students attending Masico programs back to their home district is always something that is highlighted and celebrated when a student has met their goals and they're able to move back to their resident district. That's something that is, is a great thing that's happening. For students, we reviewed some policies as usual, pretty typical things. I did one call out I wanted to make that Melissa was giving us information about was the M D E's rate of special education complaints has skyrocketed this school year. So it's just something to be mindful of as we're thinking about appropriate staffing and just staying on top of what's needed from a staffing level to make sure we're in compliance with special education law, providing students with appropriate service and in working with families whose students receive special education services. So those numbers are, the number of complaints is fairly concerning. And yeah, just something to maintain awareness.
Those are parental complaints? Those are teacher parental complaints, M D E about?
About the service that, yeah, about special education services and due process complaints. Good news, Matt will be speaking at the STEP graduation in May. And is the commencement speak? I'm sure you, I'm sure you have your speech already. Eye contact, don't look at your notes, you know, all those things. So that's good. I'm going to try to go to that, just because I'd like to see the students not, I mean, it is about you. But I'd like, it is about you, but not really about you. And we approved the calendar for the 2526 school year at Masico, which again is a large process where we have seven districts where we're trying to align calendars to that. So we approved the calendar. And then, like I said, several policies, pretty typical, typical process to what we do at our board. We will be in May going to, we'll have our May meeting at the Wings location in Litchfield, which Masico provides the education. It's a, it's a chemical dependency program, so a treatment center where Masico provides the education there. So we'll be touring that. I'm looking forward to that. And yeah, that's about it.
Sarah. Next is Wright Tech. Jim is absent. The minutes from the last two meetings are attached. I don't, not sure if anyone attended any meetings or has any intel on any links. Otherwise, the minutes, like I said, the minutes are attached for...
Just one question. Do they find a superintendent? Are they...
Yep.
The executive director is an hire.
I'm going on Tuesday.
Are you?
Yep.
Good.
With Jim, but that way I can help more as needed.
Thank you, Ryan. Rachel, you've got the next two.
Yep, so Safe Schools, we had Neil Humalar. And we spent the entire time doing an interactive on peer mental health support. And so it was login and kind of did back and forth questions and stuff like that. And we talked about interacting with your peers in the workplace and so forth. Not a whole lot to share on that. And then the next one is schools for affordable and fair funding. I was not able to attend that. I don't know if you did, Matt?
I had it online, but I got interrupted about 12 times.
So I was able to go through the packet. They sent us the packet and all the slideshows and stuff ahead of time. So at least we can get caught up if we are not able to attend. So I was able to look at talking about Wallace's budget plan, which cuts 240 million. The ones that affect us the most are in the student transportation, library aid, things like that. And then the 79 million in Q Comp cuts, which is proposed on the budget. But then I was at the Capitol Thursday last week, talking with some legislators, and there's talk about the Q Comp cuts not being able to go through. There's some bipartisan support on keeping Q Comp right now. And so that is up in the air, and we have strong belief that that will not be taken out. So hopefully that stays for our staff. Outside of that, they had some stuff in there about what the governor's priorities are. There's some language cleanup, especially in literacy curriculum, $40 million for REDA 3.0, I think is what we're on now, is still in there. There is a timeline thing that clarifies which educators don't have to receive training by July 1st, 2027. And it delays the training, it strikes the delayed training timeline for the M D E literacy specialist and the district literacy lead. So that had been pushed out, and the new proposal pushes it back again. And so it's great fun for schools to try to figure out when you have to be trained by and really glad we're ahead of schedule, honestly, because some of these schools might be finding out they have to be trained faster than I thought they did. Outside of that, we had two representatives from Education Finance there, and they were there to take questions. So that's the update I have.
How many districts participate in Q Comp across the state?
One third of the districts.
Yeah, between a third and a half.
One third.
Ran out of money. So, and Q Comp's funded in... So, and QComp's funded in two ways. One is by the state, and one is it gives, the state gives districts authority to levy for it at the property tax level.
Yeah, they said the argument was that some schools or some of the legislators didn't realize that compensatory aid is not exactly equal across all districts. And when they started getting hammered by people there about that, when they were like, well, just use your compensatory aid. And some of the schools like, or I don't, were like, hmm, we don't really get that. And so they're starting to push back a little bit. And so there's thoughts that it might not be struck from budget.
And there's more support, doesn't it?
Losing support. And there's more support going towards MDE and the fully-funded school launches. And maybe that up to like $250,000 instead of funding everybody.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have old business. There are four policies within old business. Is there anyone here for public comment on any of these four policies related on the, under old business? All right, and we'll move through each of them. The first one is the approval of the second read of policy 410, family and medical leave. Thanks, Rachel. Corey, any discussion?
Very efficient.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries to approve that policy. The next policy is the approval of the second read of policy 614, school tests or district testing plan and procedure. And do I have a motion to approve that policy?
Delued.
Corey, first.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, policy approved. Next policy is the second read, to rescind policy 617, the school district insurance of preparatory and high school standards.
So moved.
Thanks, Sarah. Second?
Second.
Second by Deppa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right. That is approved to rescind that policy. And the next policy is approve the second read of policy 701, establishment and adoption of the school district budget.
I'm moved, Ryan.
All right, thanks, Ryan. How about a second?
A second.
Thanks, Jess. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. Under new business, the first item we have under new business is approve the FY '27 Wright Tech Center LTFM resolution.
We discussed this last month during the work session. So the dollars are very similar every year to what we're doing. All of the money that we're doing levying for them now is for LTFM, where before it was a mixture of capital funds, because they still had some bonds that they were paying off in LTFM. So now they just combined everything into LTFM, so.
Thank you, Mary. The four attachments that Mary is referencing are all here attached to the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve FY '27?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Corey. Second by Deppa, and this is a roll call vote.
All right. Board member Shoust?
Aye.
Board member Baker?
Aye.
Board member Deppa?
Aye.
Board member Black?
Aye.
Board member Roser?
Aye.
And board member Morala?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval and first read of policy 413, harassment and violence due to substantive changes. We went over this in work session. There's a definitional change to disability that is in the policy. Do I have a...
It just sounds like we're approving harassment and violence.
Yeah, it's a terrible title.
I think the idea is to prevent, which is absolutely titled, but implied. Do I have a motion to approve this, first read of this policy?
So moved.
All right, Jess, a second.
Second.
By Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, first read is approved. The next policy is approve the first and only read of the following policies. 418 for drug-free workplace, 419 for tobacco-free environment, possession and use of tobacco, tobacco-related devices and electronic delivery devices, 301, school district administration, 302 superintendent, 303 superintendent selection, due to a scheduled review. This is a group of policies that we review on a regular annual basis. So with that, can I get a motion to approve the policies?
So moved.
We've got a first from Deppa, second from Shoust. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries for the first read of those policies. The next policy we have is to approve the first read of policy 213, school board committees due to substantive changes. This is significant changes related to the work we did in our governance processing planning with, in line with the mission, vision, and values work that we did. There are some changes that we noted in here that management's going to rework, but for now, we will approve the, or recommend that we approve the first read. Do I have a motion to recommend the first read of this policy?
So moved.
First, a second by Black. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries to move that forward. Public comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by speakers at this time. Is there anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? There are no one for public comment. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting by Deppa.
Second?